So they're good to go on that. Their peer review count is in good standing. Any site changes reviewed by the planning board in the context of this approval? Any future site changes? Well, if he decides he wants to add a pergola or something, he's got to come back. And number six is the work authorized by the approval is specific to what was presented. The applicant owner will be responsible for maintaining a positive peer review. Here's where what you have in front of you is going to change slightly. Conditions to be met prior to the start of construction. I went over Chuck's last peer review letter, and he did want to make sure that the plan set was revised to have a showing that the current perforated pipe shown on the plan has to be a solid pipe. And I want to make sure we get that on there. Chuck is going to be using that plan set to do field checks. So new condition number, conditions to be met prior to the start of construction will be to revise the plan set, submit it. It's up to you whether or not you want to have it come back here for your final endorsement, which is what you do with site plan approval. But if you are satisfied that staff can look at that and go, "It meets the necessary criteria," then we can save that step. So they're going to have to submit another plan showing the correct pipe, and then the conditions to be met during construction, construction period hours, and, you know, again, coordinating all inspections through the department.
Was there a reason why they didn't submit the plan corrected? Because I know that we talked about it the last time we talked about this.
Yeah, I don't know.
Do you guys have any questions regarding the, we kind of beat this one to death over the public hearings, the hearings. So I think Chuck has a pretty good handle on it once, if we give them a approval based on staff review of what is the final plan, but they do have to still submit a final plan set with the adjustment.
Yes, before their, before their building permit will be approved.
Mm-hmm. I think that that's fair. Did anybody else have any questions or comments? So you just want to, so the motion would actually be for a...
To approve with conditions.
With the conditions as discussed and as staff will, or as staff...
Correct.
...deems necessary. So I need a motion from someone to do that, I guess.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Yeah, you, yeah, because you're eligible to vote, this is all you can do it, so. So you're going to second. So Jay's made the motion, and Caroline's second. Any other discussion regarding the approval? Were there, I mean, oh, the motion's pretty good. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you.
There you go. And amazingly, this is it.
Well, no, you have one more thing, which was right before. The action items 2A and 2B will be for the next meeting, but the site plan endorsement set for East Main Street did come in. It met all the requirements of the condition set forth in the decision, and all I need is for you to authorize me to sign that as the approved endorsement set.
Oh, okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
You're not eligible.
Not this time. See, you're overstuffed. You did one thing, now all of a sudden we're in trouble. We have a motion in a second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Last thing is, I guess, we have an informal discussion regarding, what's the address there? Market Street, sorry.
Market Street.
Yes, sir.
If you'll turn on the microphone, Mike.
They saw you when they all took off. I don't know what that means. You're going to have to push that button in front of you, and it should turn green, and get the mic close to you.
Okay. Is that good?
Introduce yourself and fire away.
My name is Mike Patello. I'm here representing KBD Associates, and again, this is for an informal presentation regarding a cannabis business that we'd like to locate at 2 Market Street.
Okay.
So I would like to go through a quick presentation, I believe.
Do you want to say quickly?
Yep.
Everybody get their bearings here.
Market Street's over here.
You guys can see it there, all right.
Okay, I'm just going to quickly turn on the area, and I've got your presentation queued up, Mike.
So obviously, the property highlighted in red is the building. The building takes up the whole site right there, and I'll get into this a little bit later, but directly to, is that the west, I believe? The, yeah, the parking lot there is where the parking will be. The property owner for the building also owns the parking lot across the street under the same entity. So as part of the lease, obviously, the parking for that other lot would be included in the lease.
Okay.
Okay. So let me just explain quickly who we are. So I'm making this presentation under KBD Associates, but you may have seen me before. I am the president of the Monroe Associates, which, you know, operates the Vault Cannabis Dispensary in Webster Plaza. We have this under a different entity. It's the same owners, it's just under a different entity to keep the businesses separate for several reasons. So again, I'm president of the Vault. I will also be running this company as well. The key resource along with me, he's not here today, it's his child's first Halloween, so they're out trick-or-treating, and...
Some things are more important.
Yeah. His, his name is Alex Wharton, and again, one of the things when you, if you're familiar with some people in the cannabis industry, they don't necessarily have, like, a strong scientific resume or whatever. That's not Alex. Alex went to the University of Rhode Island. He's got a couple of degrees in bio-science, biology, biomedical pharmaceuticals, again, you can read that. Worked in pharmaceutical companies, and also, obviously, a pretty huge cannabis fan. So he's worked in some pretty credible cannabis businesses on the West Coast as well as en masse. So again, we're bringing a pretty good team to open this business, and from that, I'll just continue on to the location of the site. Like we just discussed, it's on the corner of Railroad Ave, Market Street. The building itself has two floors.
You want her to go to the next slide?
Oh, sorry. You can, yeah, there you go.
Sorry.
That's all right. So the building consists of two floors. Right now, there's nothing at all on the second floor. The first floor, there's some very light manufacturing going on and some storage. Each floor is about 12,000 square feet. We are planning to occupy the first floor, and if business expands, potentially expand to the second floor. Like anything else, this project comes with some challenges. Unfortunately, the building does not have sufficient electrical supply, so we're, both the property owners and myself are trying to work with different electricians, as well as National Grid, to see not only how much it costs to get the correct power to the building, but also what the timeline is. Unfortunately, you know, we've heard some horror stories where to upgrade electrical is, you know, nine months, 12 months, whatever, so we're trying to work through, through that now and figure out, you know, if that's going to work or not. So, next slide. So as far as the operations that are going to happen at the property, there's, I've got it summed up into four different ones here, okay? Basically, there's going to be cannabis extraction and packaging, a cannabis tissue, tissue culture operation, and then a third-party cannabis delivery service, and then a commercial kitchen, and I'll explain all of these. So in layman's terms, cannabis extraction is you take the biomass or the actual flower, you, and again, the very rudimentary. Alex would, you know, cringe if I said this in front of you guys, but essentially, you take the biomass, the cannabis, you kind of squeeze it out so you get, like, the purest form of cannabis out into distillate, and then you further process it into different types of concentrates. Again, it's just a more direct way of getting the THC instead of, you know, smoking a joint or, yeah, smoking a joint. So this will end up in essentially vape cartridges or edibles, or again, the craft concentrates, which we talk about. People will smoke that in different forms as well. That hydrocarbon extraction, when you look at it, it actually looks like a, a couple of large stainless steel vessels with a bunch of glass tubes and globes, and again, it processes it all. The, one of the key ingredients to process it is they use butane, so obviously, that's a fairly volatile, I guess, gas. So everything would be contained in what's called the C1D1 room to make sure that if there are any issues with gases building up or whatever, it notifies, it, you know, sounds the alarm to notify people out of there. It will evacuate all the air instantly and do everything to make sure that nothing bad happens. Worst-case scenario, it will automatically notify, you know, police and fire. But again, this is not an uncommon operation. It happens in, you know, the food industry and several other industries where they do extraction like this. So the next slide. One more down. So packaging operations. So if you're not aware, there's just a whole bunch of businesses, cannabis businesses that open up in the state, grow facilities, tons of retail. So I don't want to say that the market is actually saturated, but there is a very good supply of cannabis out there. So you get these grow facilities that will grow the product, and sometimes they grow more than they can actually package or process themselves. So what we would be doing is we would be like a third-party resource to take in their cannabis and package it in either pre-rolls or different containers under their labels, and then, you know, ship it out like that. And obviously, part of it is to take in the cannabis and do the extraction piece that I also mentioned. So we would be taking in that cannabis, packaging it, and then shipping it out to the different stores. Next slide, please. And then, you know, obviously, we're producing the distillate that would go in the edibles, so we will have a kitchen to process chocolates, gummies, mints, baked goods, every kind of form that you can imagine edibles being in, and there are many. And again, under that, we may do some of that under our brand name. We may do some of that under the brand name of the groups that we're getting the product from, so we're kind of a one-stop shopping for the cannabis industry. And then the next operation is a cannabis tissue culture lab. So we will have to go for a cultivation license, but we are not planning on growing the plants to, you know, like, the full growth and harvesting them. Basically, each of the cannabis has different strains, and they have different hybrid strains. If you are able to get the genetics correct and make some of those strains, they have better taste, better effect, better growth potential, right? So we have a couple of people that we'll also be working with that are world-renowned as far as their genetics, so we'll have a genetics lab there, and then we'll take those genetics and sell those to the different cultivation facilities throughout the state. And so first of all, I am not a cannabis user, and I've been to some grow facilities that smell incredibly good, right? Based on some of those strains, like, it smells just like pineapple, or it smells like banana, or whatever. Yeah, and, and one of the things too is when you, when we look at those plants, they're only get to be like this big, and then they slice them and do whatever genetic, you know, mutations they do. And I'll talk more about odor control in a minute, but then the other thing is a delivery service, so, and that'll be a business-to-business delivery. Under the licensing, whether it's manufacturing or cultivation, we have the ability to use a van that will get certified by the CCC as, you know, with all the correct guidelines, to deliver to and from our business. We're going to go for a third party because a lot of times, there's also a pretty good business to go from one cannabis business to another, and you're just delivering it, you know, back and forth, and the, it's, it's a pretty easy logistics model to kind of make that work. And we only plan on having one, maybe two vans at, at pretty much the most, so what we're looking at. Usually, those vans are, you know, like, the small sprinter vans, or the larger sprinter vans are, are the smaller ones, but it's not like a UPS truck or any of that, it's usually smaller. So community concerns. Obviously, with security is always a big concern. I've had a discussion, I met with Chief Shaw, we talked about, you know, some of the issues in the neighborhood, what his concerns were, and again, we kind of came to a pretty good plan, and that plan will get further developed as we go forward. And that will meet all the CCC guidelines with all the cameras, access controls, everything that goes along with that. As far as traffic, we plan on having 12 to 15 employees per shift. Probably, we won't get to the 10 to 15, or sorry, 12 to 15 employees probably until we've been operating for a good six to nine months, okay? As business builds, we'll add people on. If business builds, you know, like we hope it would be, we would have a second or potentially a third shift to maximize the equipment that we'd be putting in that building. And just, you know, quickly, some of the equipment we'd be putting in that building, the price tags are in the million-dollar range, just below or just over a million dollars. So obviously, if we can use that, utilize that capacity over a couple of shifts, you know, that's what we'd like to do. As far as deliveries, there would be up to four to five vans coming or going per day. Could be our vans, could be other vans dropping stuff off or picking stuff up. Now, the nice thing about that property is there's actually two garage doors. One is directly on the corner, and that would be for, like, a tractor-trailer height, so it's like dock height. The other garage door, you can actually pull in, and it's, I want to say it's like a 24-foot space that you can pull in before where the other garage door is. So there's a real good potential that for any deliveries, we'd have the van come in, close the garage door, take care of business completely inside out of the public's view. And then, so obviously, I know odor is an issue with Cure Leaf up the street. I drive by there frequently. I haven't actually smelled it lately, but there's been a few days that have been very noticeable. The, so when we take in the biomass... So, when we take in the biomass from the cultivation facilities, it's going to be sealed, right? Because we wanna make sure we maintain as much freshness as we can, so you're not gonna get any odor in there. When we take it in, it's either gonna be in a vault or a refrigerated room. Again, that's sealed. Nothing's coming out of there, plus the, you know, again, the product itself is sealed. When we open that product to process it, yes, there will be some odor, but it's gonna be pretty quick from the time we open it to the time it goes into the machine or it gets packaged. Once it gets packaged, it's usually very minimal odor. But any HVAC equipment that we have will have charcoal filters built in to the design to, you know, make sure we minimize whatever we have. But again, when you look at grow facilities, their main odor comes from when they're getting ready to harvest, right? And we're not gonna be growing anything to that, you know, to that completion, anyway. So, it'd just be the biomass that we come in. And again, we open up the containers, process it, and then go from there. That's all I have. I'm not sure what questions you have, but I'm here.
You're not gonna be open to the public?
Oh, no. Not at all. No, but strictly a business-to-business.
Don't like it.
Yep.
Why here?
Available property is the one thing. Industrial property is at a premium, or it's basically nonexistent. That building itself is... It's 12,000 square feet on each floor, so that's a decent amount of open space that you can't find too many places. Three, 4,000, you can find that kind of space fairly easily, but if you want anything over seven or eight, that's kind of tough to find.
Was Worcester County a reason because of grow facilities that are nearby or something? Or...
I think just in general, where it doesn't matter the use. Industrial space, that kind of industrial space is not on the market long. We wanted to stay either from Webster over as far as, like, Attleboro, right? And not go too far into mass as well. So, geographically, that's where we were. And then, besides the limitation of industrial space, there's also certain communities that are not open to cannabis businesses.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
Will you have your name on the outside of the building?
I don't think so. I don't know. We don't need to have our name on the outside of the building.
No.
And if we did, it would be KBD Associates, not anything, you know, calling out cannabis or whatever.
More of a statement, but my main concern would be ventilation. I spent two hours at Cure Leaf on the tour, and they believe, and this is from last April, I was when I toured their facility, and they believe that the main culprit of the odor was coming from their processing rooms, which didn't have sufficient HVAC systems and scrubbing. And so, my concern would be... I see kind of the same... What could be similar to what they're doing at Cure Leaf. It's... This is much more... This is much closer to a residential area. So, my main concern would be, you know, how do we eliminate that odor? Because I think if we allow it as it is, you know, the... Probably be complaints from the residents fairly quickly. Just my opinion.
And it... Obviously, that's a real concern, right? Because it is... It does have an extremely strong odor. Again, I can tell you, on a scale perspective, we are nowhere close to the scale that Cure Leaf is. And the areas that we would have kind of open cannabis will be very well ventilated, either and go through internal filters, or if it's an inline HVAC filtration system, we would do that, too. And as part of the design, obviously, the building inspector and, you know, the different trade inspectors will be looking at that, too, and will make sure we're calling out, you know, all the odor control remediation that we've been able to put in there. But the groups that we're working with run a very similar operation to this, and they do not have any odor concerns, and they're smack in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Right? So, again, we wanna make sure we preserve as much of that freshness as we can, so we keep that as sealed as we can for as long as we can. But I'm not gonna tell you there's not gonna be any odor. I'm just saying, if there is, we're gonna make sure that we have the processes in place to remediate that as much as possible. Because, you know, the last thing we wanna do is get the community upset with us, because that doesn't end well for anybody. So, we're very much aware of that.
Yeah. I would think that we'd probably wanna have some peer review to get to that point for the filtration, because nobody here is an expert on what you're doing or what anybody else is doing. So, we'd wanna see... Probably see another facility of about the same size and actually get some comments from them on how they're doing it and what the latest and greatest filtration would be, because we can't go through what we did, what we've been through with the grow facility. It's just not fair to the town.
Nope. I understood. And again, you know, as we're going through the design phase, I'm not sure who the right people are, but we'll, you know, get people involved as much as possible. All right? So...
I can certainly ask the professional community who they would recommend as well. And Mike gets ready to submit. I will look around, and you can look around, and we'll find a peer reviewer for the odor specifically. But the site plan application will come to you, and you'll be dealing with all those site plan issues. And special permit. This requires a special permit as well.
Right. Yeah, but that'll be part of the special permit, be the HVAC review, because we're not gonna do that again.
No.
Yeah. You know, one other thing I just remember that I didn't mention is part of the potential solution for the power supply may include putting... Bringing the power from across the street to close to the building. So, it might need a telephone pole there and potentially a pad-mounted transformer. But again, the... Where the building is, the property owner also owns the lot on the side of that. So, that may be one more.
Well, he owns most of them, doesn't he, in that group?
There's always something.
Yeah.
So, it would be, yeah, exactly right where the red is. And the power is across the street where the parking lot is.
Oh, okay.
So...
Well, that shouldn't be too bad, then. If you can get the parts, that's the issue. You can't even get residential meter sockets in three months now.
You know, when you look at things, you're like, yeah, that shouldn't be too bad.
Until you...
The estimate and the financial estimate's one thing, and then you look at the timeline, and that's sort of an estimate, but there's no guarantees on that. So, again, when I say that there's some challenges with this property, those are the main ones, right? The odor control, I'm not at all worried, because we can throw more ventilation and, you know, filtration in there, but...
You can say that, but I'm worried about it, so...
Yeah.
But we'll figure it out.
I understand. I don't have it in my backyard, so...
Okay. Anybody else's questions? No? Anne?
The selectmen had asked Mike to come and present the concept to you in advance of submitting an application, and I suspect I will be requested to submit a memo to them outlining the questions that you had and who was present, and I would need you to authorize me to draft that memo to the selectmen.
Okay. I don't think we... You want us to vote to authorize you? Just to cover it?
Just... Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of authorizing and to produce a memo to the selectmen?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't... Like I said, it's probably a good place to put it. I don't... How's your business doing in Webster? Is it...
We see about 500 people a day.
500?
Which is good. I say it's good. It's good compared to some other businesses.
Is it what you expected?
So, yes and no. I think that although that's a healthy number, if you look at when we started the process to open, there were a lot fewer businesses, so we figured we'd be a little bit closer to 700, 800 a day. But like, you know, you drive, you know, five miles in any direction, you're gonna hit a couple of dispensaries.
Right.
So, we're still pretty satisfied with that number. We also have a store... Our second store's in Worcester. We opened that last December, and, you know, we're seeing 150, 180 people a day. So, it's a little bit different, but that's just the nature of the, you know, the competition. And Connecticut is legal now, but they don't have stores open.
Right.
I'm sure when they do open, you know, that'll probably drop some of our clientele a little bit. But, you know, I think from a town perspective, we haven't really had too many issues. A couple of unruly people out in the parking lot. Webster PD responds. We give them all the video, and hasn't really been any major issues. So... Yeah. We're up to total 65 employees right now. I wanna say there's probably 40 of those in Webster.
Well, that's good. Nice.
It keeps me busy. There is no question about that.
You have to deal with all 65. That's enough, isn't it? Anybody else?
Every day is interesting.
Well, good luck with your project. I, you know, will take it step by step.
Cool. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
I'm gonna go take my mask off now. Anne, anything else?
Nothing else.
Minutes we'll get to next meeting. Hopefully, we'll get caught up and go from there, and everything else can wait. We understand how busy you are, and thank you for doing double duty with conservation and planning and everything you're doing, because I understand how hard it can be. Anything else? Anyone?
The question now, now, the Shaw's side of the plaza, and probably even his building, his portion of the building he's in, now, is that owned by a new owner, Lundgren?
I was having a hard time hearing you there.
Yes.
I'm sorry. So, I believe the new ownership on the Shaw's side is a person by the name of Lundgren. So, has he come before, you know, the selectmen or you as far as the...
Shaw's side. Again, point me in the right direction.
So, you have the Kmart Plaza to the right.
Yes, okay.
The Shaw's, I believe that was bought out by a person named by the name of Lundgren. And I'm just wondering if you've heard anything through the grapevine as far as the intent of that particular building.
We do know that that property... The property has been sold. We all know that. Somebody pointed out to me in whatever trade journal they're reading was that Albertson's out of California, which is a big national chain, bought Shaw's, Star Market, and Kroger all on the same day. So, I don't know what's gonna happen with what's hap... With that particular building, but I know that the beef that they had with the lease with Shaw's and the previous property owner was holding up any kind of redevelopment of that site, and that's all I've heard. Maybe now with this shift and this corporate rearranging, maybe this'll loosen up a bit. But I don't know. I've heard nothing.
They did... They bought a lot of stuff in Worcester County.
Yeah, they have. In fact, the Sanian School on Day Street, they were the first one to come forward to put a proposal on that, and for some reason, they backed out, as did the Cunningham Group on Day Street as well.
Yeah.
And among the parish council and Father Adam told me first... Told us firsthand that they had backed out because they thought that the planning board was putting too many constraints on them, which I think is not correct, putting it politely. That... And that was the reason why they backed out, but...
Well, we'll find out, you know, at the next meeting when I get in touch with them. I'm gonna ask them to submit a formal letter. I don't know if they'll explain what happened, but hopefully, they will. It'd be nice to know.
One other quick question. The property over... Excuse me, over by Webster Sheet Metal, what's going on with that? Is there any more development on that?
13 to 15 Old Worcester Road, Mark Devich. Yeah, that's on my hit list of people to get in touch with. I should say my list. People to get in touch with. And unfortunately, same thing with the Baton Street Solar. Just been buried, and I've had some pretty rotten family things going on, so...
All right. Thanks, Anne.
That's a good reason. No, but I haven't forgotten, and I do have a list, so, as you can imagine.
As long as I'm not on it, I'm good. All right. Nothing else? Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.